Good evening. This, the 101st meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Meetings of the City Council are open to the public for the duration of the meeting. Persons attending must behave in an orderly manner or are subject to removal. Council chambers must be cleared at the conclusion of the meeting. Failure to comply may result in a charge of trespassing. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Ronald Edmonds of Park Heights Community Fellowship. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Showy bowerheads. Father, we thank you for another day. And we thank you for another opportunity to come together and make decisions and have discussions as it relates to the citizens of this great city. I would ask, oh God, that you would place a special anointing on every council person, everyone in this room who have something to do with the changes that are made and the changes to be made. So may your spirit abide in this place always, and may, oh God, you be pleased as a result of our work in this room, for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you Reverend. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Scott, Mosby, Welsh, Rysinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch. Mr. President, we've a quorum.
Thank you. Before we start, I want to introduce Mr. Lisa Lewis, who is a junior at Augustus Fells Savage Institute of Visual Art. She lives in the 13th District. I'm gonna ask her to please stand. And I hope I don't butcher his name. Mr. Montrees, Montrez, did I say it right? Watts, he's a senior at Frederick Douglass High School, and he lives in the 7th District. Would you please stand? Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation is Dr. William Claddy, Clarky, on behalf of the Greater Baltimore Community Housing Resource Board, and he will be doing the showcase for us this evening. Welcome.
Well, thank you so much. Let me first thank the City Council for inviting me to come today to talk about the Greater Baltimore Community Housing Resource Board, and I'd like to also thank you for, thank the City Council for approving our grants through the Community Development Block Grant Program for these various years. We appreciate it. The Greater Baltimore Community Housing Resource Board, or CHER, was formed by HUD in 1991 to watch over, from the citizen's perspective, fair housing in communities across the country. In Baltimore, we are now a 501(c)(3) organization independent of HUD, but we work, as HUD tries to, cooperatively with a number of different agencies and organizations for fair housing. The need is greater than ever. We all know in this room that unequal housing is alive and well in Baltimore. It affects health, it affects quality of life, it affects the accumulation, or not the accumulation, of wealth by individual households. It can determine poverty, it can help poverty. What we try to do with the funds that we receive, and our major source of funding is the Baltimore Community Development Block Grant Program, along with generous in-kind donations from Clear Channel, from the Maryland Insurance Administration, and from the Community College of Baltimore County, we try to work with various organizations and agencies to do something about unequal housing. How do we do that? We work cooperatively, which means that we work, you have not heard of us, because we work for other organizations. Baltimore Neighborhoods, the Baltimore Community Relations Commission, the Maryland Commission on Civil Rights, U.S. Department of HUD, all enforce the law, all test lawsuits, et cetera. What we try to do is educate people so that they know their rights, and so that they know where to go and what to do in order to protect themselves and what happens. We try to make sure that they are aware that there is somebody out there that cares what they're going through. We also promote, in that process, we promote other organizations. You haven't heard of us because we try to get folks to go to HUD, or to go to the Commission, or the Commission on Civil Rights to deal with the problem. But we try to get them to do that so that they can protect their rights. We also work with the industry so that they're aware of their responsibilities, that they're aware that certain practices are unlawful, that certain practices, while they might not be intentionally unlawful, have that in effect. We do that by working with every organization that wants to work with us. We also are aware, and I know I'm probably bending my five minutes now, we also are aware that fair housing, unequal housing, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King said, is something that is complex. It's not just one city, it's not just one neighborhood, it's a lot of things working together, for good or for evil. We also then try to work on regional solutions, so we work with CPA and other organizations. We are very glad, we distribute brochures, we do trainings, we have a cable TV show on Channel 75, we have a radio show on Clear Channel, Heaven 600. Please go to our website, and you'll see copies of these various things and links. We would love to work with any organization that would like to work with us. Once again, thank you so much for the opportunity, and I really welcome any folks who would like to contact me, or, of course, everything we do is free, and we would love to hear from you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It is the Council custom to generalize the invocation, ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the October 19th City Council Meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Kraft, second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion is current, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to three of the agenda. Executive nomination withdrawn.
EA 15-0297, Jessica Salmon, Member, Commission on Disabilities, 11th District.
Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0584, Psychoactive Substances. Ordinance for the purpose of prohibiting the distribution of the psychoactive substances, defining certain terms, imposing administrative sanctions, civil fines, and criminal penalties for violations, and providing for the seizure, testing, and destruction of these substances. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been the science of the Health Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0271R, informational hearing, making microfinance work for Baltimore. Resolution for the purpose of calling on microfinance providers, community leaders, and city officials responsible for economic development to appear before the City Council to discuss how to make better use of the potential presented by internationally successful microfinance models to improve low-income community, to improve low-income community access to much-needed lending and other financial products. Sponsored Stokes, Scott, Costello, Kraft, Middleton, Clark.
Please note, Council President co-sponsor. Councilman Kern, a co-sponsor. Council Vice President Rysinger, a co-sponsor. Councilman Welch, a co-sponsor. Councilman Branch is a co-sponsor. Councilman Mosby, co-sponsor. Councilwoman Spector is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. This is a bill which, not obviously, sorry, which does speak to the, how we can more successfully use microfinancing models to improve low-income community access. This is a way to get finances and funding into the hands of people, frankly, of low income. It doesn't give them a lot of money, but it does allow them to get a mortgage, to buy a vehicle, to make school loans, and so this is actually something, a model that works across the world, not just here, but this will allow those who are actively doing this now to come in and to talk to us about the models to do that here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council Resolution 15-0272R, request for federal action, oppose misguided trade deals. Resolution for the purpose of calling upon the Baltimore delegation to the U.S. Senate and the U.S. House of Representatives to oppose the TPP and any similar trade deals if they fail to restructure the misguided and failed policies of the past. Sponsored Kern.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern. Please note, please note, Council Vice President Rysinger, a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I beg your forgiveness, I could not be at luncheon today to explain the real impetus for this resolution, and obviously, we're asking for our federal partners to support our working men and women. And speaking about the working men and women, I know we're joined by Mr. Ernie Greco, the president of AFL-CIO Council, of the working men and women of this region. The U.S. Trade Deficit of the past 25 years have corporate-driven incorporating rules that skew benefits to economic elites, while requiring working families to bear the brunt of social, of such policies. Whereas the trade deficit is driven by North American Free Trade Agreement, China's accession to the World Trade Organization, and the U.S.-Korean Free Trade Act have displaced 700,000 jobs, and 3-point million jobs, and 75,000 jobs respectively. In Baltimore, which we all grew up in, most of, of us, we used to have 35 employees, 35,000 employees at Bethlehem Steel. General Motors had 10,000 workers. We had Armco Steel, Continental Can, Lever Brothers, Western Electric, London Fog, all the breweries we had in this town, and SK Meat Packing Plant, and I could go on and on and on about all the manufacturing jobs Baltimore has lost. We want to bring jobs back to Baltimore. We need to start somewhere, and unfortunately, we can't control that here economically, but the offshore of manufacturing and service jobs deprived local and state governments of sorely needed revenues jeopardized the livelihoods of millions of public servants, as well as construction workers whose jobs depend upon infrastructure building, repair, and maintenance. While yes, this is a resolution asking our federal delegation to oppose the Trans-Pacific Partnership, all this trickles down the economic chain about jobs, and not in just local to subdivisions, but Baltimore, with the unemployment rate at 7.4%, I believe it is quoted in here. I'm proud to have worked in the manufacturing industry for 16 years at the Sugar House, Mr. President, down here in Domino's Sugar. We still have them there, even though I left, they're still there, but I'm hoping that, even though it's only a resolution of this council, it's gonna be presented through City Councils throughout the United States, and we're gonna be one of the first couple to support this, and I hope my colleagues will allow immediate adoption of this resolution. Council President, I move for suspension of the appropriate rules to allow for the immediate adoption of City Council Resolution 15-0272R.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Everybody co-sponsors? Okay, entire council co-sponsors, okay.
We're making some work here for Liam, but.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
I want to thank my colleagues, I'm sorry I couldn't be at lunch to explain this, but we need to get our, we need, we, crime and heroin addiction, which I'll talk about in a minute with the Health Department, second reader, it all comes down to, we have jobs for our youth, we have jobs for our families, we have jobs in our communities that can, that can, good-paying jobs, and this is maybe a small step, but I want to thank everyone for co-sponsoring, and with that, Council President, I move City Council Resolution 15-0272R favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott.
Immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of adopting the Resolution 15-0272R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is current, this resolution is adopted. Huh? Did I hear you say something, Council? Please note that Councilwoman Clark is a pass, okay?
City Council Resolution 15-0273R, request for state action. Restore Senior Care Operating Fund cuts. Resolution for the purpose of calling on Maryland Department of Aging to immediately reverse the more-than-two-thirds cut to Baltimore's senior center operating funds. Award and restore fiscal year 2016 funding levels to at least those awarded in fiscal year 2015 to avoid further endangering the health and well-being of our vulnerable elderly population. Sponsored Clark, Middleton, President Young, Scott, Costello, Kraft, Stokes.
Please note, Councilwoman Spector, co-sponsor. Council Vice President Rysinger, Councilman Welch is a co-sponsor. Any more co-sponsors? Councilman Mosby, Councilman Kern, Chair recognizes Councilman Branch, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My colleague, Chair of the Urban Affairs and Aging Committee, Councilwoman Middleton and I are happy to have begun this effort to restore funding that has been lost to us from the State of Maryland Office of Aging. I have, this afternoon, on behalf of us, spoken to the Secretary of Aging for the State, Secretary Kramer, and she indicates that indeed it was a formula mistake in state legislation which has led to a serious, a serious loss of revenue from the state to our senior center organizations here in Baltimore, all 16 of them. And so, we, what we are hoping for with the cooperation of the secretary is a restoration through a legislative change at the state level which changes the formula. So basically, that will be the, the effort behind this resolution as it goes forward to a hearing in the Urban Affairs and Aging Committee. So I hope that everyone will co-sponsor. Just know that we have to lobby hard with our House of Delegates and State Senate people to help us change this formula so that the senior citizens of Baltimore City get their fair share of state proceeds, and I'm glad to be, to know that we'll be working in this effort with the Governor's Office and with the Office of Aging. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton. Is that somebody's phone ringing? Okay, I'm gonna overlook it, go ahead, Councilwoman.
And I, first of all, I'd like to thank the councilperson of the 14th District for including me in this effort, and we also should notify the, as a representative of the, and a commissioner on the Commission of Aging, we should also include them as well, and just want to also stress how important this is. We, the senior centers in our city are already struggling and trying to find funds and apply for just separate grants for things like transportation and just getting around, even to the symposium that our council president has every year. Some of those funds are, are helped to provide transportation to this one big event that is being held every year. So, you know, our, our older adults in this city are important to us, our senior, our senior centers need constant attention, as well as our recreation centers, so this is, every cent that we get is, is very important to us. So, thank you again, Councilwoman Mary Platt-Clark, for joining me in this effort, and again, this is so important, and anyone out there that wants to join in, please call our office.
Thank you. This has been the science of the Urban Affairs and Aging Committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that I can introduce a City Council Resolution from the floor.
Second by Council Vice President Rysinger. All those in favor of suspending the rules to allow for the introduction of this City Council Resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is current, the rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 15-0274R. The clerk will read the resolution and to the record.
City Council Resolution 15-0274R, investigative hearing, public housing, residents' sexual abuse allegations. Resolution for the purpose of calling on the Housing Commissioner and other housing, and other housing authority of Baltimore City officials to appear before the City Council to address the reprehensible allegations of sexual abuse of public housing residents at the hands of HABC employees, and to explain housing's response, or lack thereof, to these allegations once they were made aware of them. Sponsored Stokes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think this is the first resolution I've ever brought from the floor, just because the drumbeat has been getting louder and louder on these issues of public housing. The sexual abuse is, of course, the most egregious, and it's been going on apparently for several years, that folk in administration have known about it, but have not done anything to correct it. In, in addition, the issue, situation a week or so ago at Lakeview Towers, Monument East this week, and Douglas Homes, and continuing concerns and problems that are going on for citizens, not just the matters of the buildings, but also the conditions with vermin running around freely in these buildings, et cetera. I, I think it's really past high time that we hold a hearing and bring in the Commissioner and others to give us an explanation of why this has been going on for so long, and what they are immediately going to do to correct these conditions. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, please note that Councilman Welch is a co-sponsor. Councilman Kern, Councilman Costello, Councilman Branch, Councilman Kraft, Councilman Mosby, your co-sponsor, Councilman Scott, Councilwoman Middleton, Council Vice President Rysinger. Any more co-sponsors? Council President Young is a co-sponsor. This has been the science of the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. You can find the Consent Count in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Count? Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving the Consent Count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is current, this count is approved. We'll now move the bills on the second readers. Executive, oh, before we move the bills on second reader, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, Mr. President, I'd like to change my vote on the resolution on the U.S. Trade Deal. I had, I apologize that I wasn't following the conversation, and now I understand what we're talking about, and I would like to vote yes, if I may be recorded as a yes vote.
We will go back to Resolution 15-0, I got it, Councilwoman. We'll go back to Resolution 15-0272R, and we will record Councilwoman Clark as a yes vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move the bills on second read, executive appointments.
EA 15-0295, Gloria Diggs, Member, Commission on Disabilities, 4th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
President, the committee held a hearing on Wednesday, October 21st, 2015, and I move this nomination favorable.
Second by, second by Council Vice President Rysinger. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0296, Lori Patria, Member, Commission on Disabilities.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move this nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0298, Maria Gabriela Aldana Enriquez, Member, Hispanic Commission, 14th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move this nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0299, Patricia Leckie, Member, Hispanic Commission.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Thank you again, Mr. President, I move this nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nominee is confirmed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
City Council Resolution 15-0244R, informational hearing, Heroin Task Force Report. For the purpose of calling on the Health Commissioner and the co-chairs of the mayor's Heroin Treatment and Prevention Task Force to appear before the City Council to report on the findings and recommendations of the Heroin Treatment and Prevention Task Force.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 21st, the Health Committee conducted a public hearing on City Council, Resolution 15-0244R, entitled Informational Hearing, the Heroin Task Force Report. The committee voted the resolution favorable. During the hearing, the committee heard from several of the people involved with the task force, and I just want to hot add a couple, we heard from, obviously, our Health Commissioner, Dr. Nguyen, who described the issue of heroin in Baltimore City and the task force recommendations provided demonstration, had to administer naloxone, demonstrated on me. We heard from David Z, a Baltimore resident recovery, described his experiences recovering heroin act. We heard from Carlos Hardy, the CEO of Maryland Recovery Organization Connecting Committees, discussed his work as a peer of Baltimore recovery specialists. We heard from Lillian Donard, the Director of Glenwood Life Counseling Center, discussed efforts of the Glenwood Life Counseling Center to meet the needs of its surrounding communities and address the skepticism towards treatment of suicides, and last but least, we heard from Mr. Tim Kuheart, who lent her support to what, no, lent her support to the, to the efforts of our Health Commissioner. I was a member of the Heroin Task Force, the mayor reported me on heroin. I was actually only elected official, and I, and I took that duty very seriously. I visited several of the methadone clinics and talked to clients, talked to directors, talked to the intake folks. Last Wednesday, when we had the hearing, there was a great big bust, heroin bust in Annapolis County, where 12 people were arrested, $90,000 in cash, guns, obviously, a lot of heroin, and the officers and the police commissioner in Annapolis was so grateful, and it looked good that we did that, they did that, and, and that reduces our supply of heroin on a short-term basis. But the Heroin Task Force, and Governor Hogan, I applaud him and his efforts, from a statewide effort, because heroin is as much of a problem in Carroll County as it is in Carroll Park, as much of a problem in Harford County as it is in Harford Road, but, yes, that big bust in Annapolis County reduced that supply, and the old law of supply and demand. Hopefully, with the recommendations of the task force, we can reduce the supply by reducing the demand, where folks are able to get into treatment on demand. And I attended a symposium back about 15, 16 years ago over in the National Press Club in DC, and the speaker was C. Everett Coop, the former Surgeon General, and one of the things I took away from that conference, that he said, is that you're only gonna solve the drug problem if you're able to get treatment as easily and readily available as the drugs that put you into the need of treatment. And with our Heroin Task Force and the report to the mayor, and now the report to the council, we have some strong recommendations, but we need to follow through. Of course, everything comes to funding, as everything the government does, but the stigma of this town being the epic center of the heroin addiction in this country, it's gotta end because we're now gonna make Baltimore the epic center for recovery, for those to get off that very vicious drug. We've learned, I've learned very much that it's not so much peer pressure, but we also know that the opiates that folks take is painkillers. When you get the issue of going through a surgery, or going through something for pain medication, is that once you get off of that... is that once they get off of that, they look for alternatives and cheaper alternatives, unfortunately, is heroin. And then they become addicted and that starts the whole process. So, I'm thankful for the, the Health Committee to vote this resolution so we could talk about it again, but you got to keep it in the forefront that we're going to make Baltimore the recovery capital of the state and of the country versus make heroin capital of the country. And it's a situation that could affect so much loss, so many different aspects of quality of life in our city, the quality of life of families, the quality of life of our communities, the crime, the homelessness. It just goes on and on and on, Mr. President. So, we have a good report. That was presented to the, to the council. I want to thank Dr. Nguyen, our Health Commissioner, for taking the lead on this, especially with the narc, narcot, what's the, naloxone, where you save lives by allowing our public service, our police, a fire department and others that are trained in delivering it to save a life. And hopefully, once you save a life, that they'll get the epiphany to correct their lives. So, Mr. President, as we all know, this is a subject that folks don't really like to talk about, but it is reality in Baltimore and we're moving forward to make our city the recovery capital of this state.
Are you going to move the resolution?
Move the resolution because the intent was to have the hearing. So, yes, Mr. President, at this time, I move Resolution, City Council Resolution 15-0244R favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of adopting this resolution say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. The resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to refer to all bills, second and third reader from this point on by short title.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of short titles for the remainder of the meeting say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The motion is carried. Short reading for the remainder of the council meeting. Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0551 Franchise Crown Castle NG Atlantic LLC.
Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on October the 8th, 2015. There are amendments on the desk of the council members. I move the amendments favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. The members are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby.
Council President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. The bill moves third reader. Please note, I know, please note that Councilman Mosby has a no. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0546 Building Fire and Related Codes 2015 Edition.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Mr. President, Mr. President, we had three hearings on this bill, September 30th, October 7th, and October 20th, and went through the bill extensively. As you know, we review this every couple of years and we have added some other international codes to it this year. There are a couple significant amendments that I'd just like to point out to the members because I think they're of value to us. One of those has to do with the permitting process and that is for our communities, when they have their fairs and festivals and they get the short-term permits, they have a whole list of fees that are for them. Well, we amended that bill now and if those community associations or groups are nonprofits, 501(c)(3), they no longer have to pay for those permits. So, that's a cost that our community groups no longer have to bear. So, that's a good thing. Second, when, Mr. President, is for a long time, we've had problems getting reports back from different agencies when the permit process has started and people get their permits the day before or two days before, they're at the very end and they're getting ready to have their event, but they're still waiting for a permit to come in. We've changed that now and basically what it says is that the permit gets referred to the agency 45 days before the event and the agency has to submit their report within 21 days. If they fail to do so within 21 days, then it is presumed that they consent to the event going forward so that they can't hold people up anymore on the permits. One final, and this is really good for summertime, now it's winter, but as we come into the spring, our sidewalks, gutters, those areas where the weeds just grow wild, we always have the eight-inch grass in the backyards. So, what we did was we changed it and said, okay, it's still eight inches in the backyard, but any grass or weeds or other vegetation that's on the abutting sidewalks, gutters or alleys, if it's four inches, they can be cited for four inches and that'll help us cut down on some of those weeds that are growing out and breaking the sidewalks up. Mr. President, the amendments are on the members' desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. The members are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill 15-0569 City Streets Naming an Unnamed Alley Harry Way.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this bill was heard on October 20th, 2015. Mr. President, Harry Wallace was born in 1931 in New Kensington, Pennsylvania. He worked for the Middle River Boys Club in 1964 and he took over as the athletic director position at the Highland Town branch in 1969. He worked there from 1969 until 2001, a total of 37 years. When he passed away in 2003, he was buried with full military honors at the Garrison Forest Veterans Cemetery. He served in the 82nd Airborne. He was honorably discharged in 1952. He did two tours in Korean War. He served under General MacArthur and General Ridgeway. He was in multiple battles. He received two Purple Hearts Combat Infantry badges, jump wings with 52 jumps, the Korean Service Medal, the Good Conduct Medal and the American Defense Medal. He mentored thousands of boys and girls while developing and organizing running multiple indoor and outdoor sports programs as well as local and traveling tournaments at the club, football, baseball, basketball, soccer, hockey. He helped Pop Warner Football get started in Baltimore. He's received numerous awards. Mr. President, they're going to be redeveloping the Boys and Girls Club, the old Salvation Red Shield building over there, and we're going to be naming the alley right next to that. They won't allow, they won't allow us to name it Harry Wallace Way because there's already a Wallace Street in the city of Baltimore. So, Mr. President, we're going to name it Harry Way and then we're going to come back later on and do a ceremonial Harry Wallace naming. But we heard the bill and it's quite a man, Mr. Harry, as I say. We would move the bill favorably at this time.
Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to suspend the appropriate rules to advance the third reader on the same day.
Second by Councilman Scott. All, all those in favor of moving Council Bill 15-0569 from second to third reader on the same night say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Council Bill 15-0569 will be voted on when we get to the third reader portion of the agenda. Land Use and Transportation Committee. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to withdraw Bill 13-0299 from second reader.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of withdrawing this bill from second reader say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is carried. This ordinance is withdrawn from second reader.
City Council Bill 15-0503 Zoning Conditional Use Secondhand Store 2412 East Monument Street.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of moving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, there's no amendments. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Branch. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill 15-0545 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to a Three Family Dwelling Unit in the R8 zoning district variances 704 North Gilmore Street.
Chair recognizes Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Vice President Ross Singer.
Mr. President, there's no amendments on this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Kern. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 15-0231R informational hearing, Community Policing Officer Friendly.
Chair recognizes Councilman Branch.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee held a hearing on
This resolution on Tuesday, October 20th. We recommend the resolution favorable. Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader. Third reader required application of rule 12-1.
City Council Bill 15-0569 City Streets Naming an Unnamed Alley Harry Way. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader to be held one meeting.
City Council Bill 14-0426 Rezoning 1713 East Pratt Street. City Council Bill 15-0542 Rezoning Certain Properties in the Remington Central Business Area.
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 15-0525 Rezoning 600, 700 and 706 South Eden Street and 711 South Central Avenue. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0526 Zoning Conditional Use Parking Open Off-Street Area 4001 through 4005 Garrison Boulevard. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0548 Rezoning Certain Properties in the Barclay Community. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0550 Sale of Property or Former, a Portion of the Former Bed of Dickman Street. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0559 Rezoning 139 West Austin Street. President Young, Kraft, Scott, Spector, President Young, Kraft, President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Spector, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes. Did y'all last week?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to announce hearing in taxation, finance, economic development. First bill is 15-0549, which is a release of right-of-way, 20-foot wide right-of-way through the former bed of Tyson Street. We will hear this bill here in chambers at 10:00 a.m. this coming Thursday. City Council Bill 15-0561, which is approving the submission of an application to the state of Maryland for the designation of a regional institution strategic enterprise zone, also called RISE Zone. We will hear that bill here in chambers at 10:05 this coming Thursday. Bill number 15, Bill number 15-0563, which is sale of property, a portion of the former bed of Cardiff Avenue. We will hear that bill at 10:10 a.m. here in chambers on this coming Thursday, October 29. And also, we will have a voting session on a bill, a resolution that's before us, 15-0204R Establishing a Baltimore City African-American Business Tourism Entertainment and Heritage Preservation Commission. We will hold that voting session this coming Thursday, October 29, here in chambers at 10:15 a.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Committee announcements. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing for the resolution that was introduced at, at tonight's meeting and that was the, to restore the senior center operating fund cuts.
Second by Councilwoman Spector. All those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. You may proceed, Councilwoman.
Thank you. The Urban Affairs and Aging Committee will hear City Council Bill 15-0273R November 12th, 2015 at 4:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And again, it's a request for state action to restore state senior center operating fund cuts. And we're also going to include and invite our federal representatives to this hearing for the speedy hearing.
Committee announcements, regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we had the pleasure of hosting 43 second graders from the Patterson Park Public Charter School this afternoon on a tour here through the city hall. They actually spent some time here in the chambers. That's why I had to leave the luncheon a little bit early today. We had one of them play you, Mr. President. We had another one play the planning director. We had someone else play a committee chairman and they had a great time in here. And when they finished, they gave me a bunch of notes here about some things they wanted. So, I'd like to read two quick little notes from second graders here at the Patterson Park Public Charter School. The first one is from Ridley Wilson. "I am a dear Councilman Kraft. I am a second grader at Patterson Park Public Charter School. I think that you should put signs that say 'no trucks' on the streets. You should do this because people can get places faster if there are no trucks blocking the streets." Another reason is, "We won't have to listen to the loud engines. Therefore, you should put up signs that say 'no trucks' allowed on the streets. Sincerely, Ridley Wilson." So, Ripley Wilson. That's Mr. Wilson, Mr. President. My second letter is from Eve Hesslin and Ms. Hesslin writes, "I am a second grader at the Patterson Park Public Charter School and I need you to help us get more trash cans. We want to keep our neighborhood clean. We do not want trash on the ground. Remember, help us get more trash cans. We do not want people to get sick and we do not want animals getting sick either. We also do not want people throwing trash on the ground because it will go in the bay. Anyway, we need more trash cans. Sincerely, Eve Hesslin, with a little heart," all drawn in there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
I just want to thank all of those that were involved in the grand opening of the Save-A-Lot food store in the Park Heights community. We had a grand opening and walk through with the mayor, the council president and several people that were involved and other elected officials that, that I missed. But that food store was so important. That area right there is a food desert and the parking lot has been completely full every day so far since the opening on Thursday. So, again, shout out to Save-A-Lot for helping to, a little bit in, in this food desert situation throughout the city of Baltimore and particularly in the, in the Park Heights community. We, we thank you. And again, it's at 2705 West Cold Spring Lane, right in between Rice's Town and Park Heights, across the street from that famous McDonald's. So, again, try to stop through there. It's a really great, clean place with lots of fresh produce. And again, the people in the neighborhood are so happy. And that happened within a year. Remember, it was a Stop Shop and Save there. And when that went through, I can, in fact, it was a couple days, a year ago, that we had that area as one of the cleanup areas during days, a year ago, that we had that area as one of the cleanup areas during the mayor's cleanup day. And I remember it so vividly because I remember some rats jumping out of a trash can when I was kind of sweeping, and it was like, oh my God, with a rat family. But, but they have like renovated that building, brand-new parking lot. I mean, it's, it's amazing how one new building can bring hope to a community. So again, shout out to Save-A-Lot.
Thank you. Well, I spent my Saturday starting off around at, I think it was like eight o'clock in the morning, over in Councilman Warren, Warren Branch's district, part of Councilman Welsh's district, and part of Nick Mosby, Councilman Mosby district, where Kaboom rebuilding those playgrounds. So if any of you want to stand up and talk to, to that, you can, because we had a grand time there. I think I ruined a pair of my pants. I thought I can get that cement out, but it won't come out. I got cement in a pair of my pants and all my tennis shoes, and it won't come out. Anybody know how to get that stuff out? Please contact my office and let me know how we can get it out, because they wear some new pants. Thank you. Chair of the Council, Councilman Mosby.
Council President won't tell you guys the full story, but he became a cement mixmaster by the end of the day. So he went to the east side and then went to another location and came to a third location where I was at. And he said, they, they're doing it all wrong. They, they got to take two bags as opposed to one bag. And he had cement all the way on his hands, his arms, his legs, and his, his feet. So I think he had more fun mixing cement than the children are on these brand-new playgrounds. But honestly, Kaboom has a true commitment to the city of Baltimore, where they've committed to doing ten brand-new playgrounds over the course of this year. This past weekend, they did three in Baltimore, two were in the seventh district. So hats off to them. It's a real cool experience. They allow the children to help design the actual playground. And then they, we rallied up about three hundred volunteers to put the playgrounds together in a matter of six hours. So it was a great day for, for the city of Baltimore.
Yeah, you should have seen Councilman Mosby doing the easy part, putting the bars up. It was kind of heavy, though. Councilman Branch, you want to say anything, or Councilman Stokes?
I was in my colleague's district with you the other day. I, I did get a pass to come in, and, and I think we worked pretty hard over there, didn't we, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. And so, but it's a great place. The councilmen actually got it all together, got it started, made sure that it was going to happen. And, Mr. President, you and I were able to come in and, and do whatever the cleanup was necessary. But I thank my colleague for getting it all together and making it happen. Thank you.
Yeah, and I must say that Councilman Branch also contacted my office and asked, I think they were short a thousand dollars to complete it. And I was able to talk with the principal, and we were able to make sure that we can get something out of the play campaign, because it was for the children. And that was all to Councilman Branch, making sure that I knew about that. And the principal did contact me, and that money is on its way. You know how slow the money comes through the Baltimore Foundation, but it's on its way. So I thank you for looking out for the children in your district. With that, meetings of the, I'm going to call on Vice President Riceinger, but meetings of the city council are open to the public for the duration of the meeting. Persons attending must behave in an orderly manner or are subject to removal. Council chambers must be cleared at the conclusion of the meeting. Failure to comply may result in a charge of trespassing. Chair of the Council, Vice President Riceinger.
Mr. President, council members, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, November second at five PM in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. There has been no further business. This concludes the one hundred and first meeting of the Sunday first term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.